Second.
All right, floor's open. Changes, deletions?
Do you after the meeting?
Additions? Yes, sir.
After the meeting?
Could we take number two under unfinished business and table it until the last meeting in September? Glenna and I are wading through it and it's working flow charts and all and it's just gonna take a little longer to clean it up.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Okay, postpone. Anybody else? Yes?
Number six and number seven are currently working their way through planning and they're having public hearings. It would probably, it might behoove us to table those until planning has an opportunity to present them to us.
I think we need a little discussion first on number seven.
Okay, he's made the motion to table. Is there a second on his motion?
Second. Could we take them one at a time?
Yeah.
Number six first?
Is that right, Beverly? You're doing a...
Okay. Okay. All right, so let's just vote on these right here. Okay, number six? Still to postpone? Is there a second to postpone?
Until when?
Yes, second.
Second, postpone with a second.
It's out.
So it's off? And number seven with a second?
No, I want to discuss.
Wait, wait, what is six postponed to?
Request?
Okay, request on number seven, we already got a vote on number two, it's off. It's postponed.
And six is off?
Okay, number seven, okay. So seven's still on because there's no second? Okay.
He withdrew his move.
Okay. That's unfinished business. Anybody else? Nothing else, motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Say aye.
Second.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, close enough. Next will be approval of the minutes for June the 10th, 2013.
I've to approve. Second.
Any changes, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any like sign? Motion carried. Before we get into the commission committee authority reports and expired terms, we have two department heads here that Alderman Mitchell requested be here. Reese is on vacation, what's gonna have the other guys here but they're out making runs right now, so. Dwayne and Earl are here, so. We'll start with which one? Earl, start with Earl. Earl, hi. It'll be you. Here he is.
I'm understanding that you guys want to know about our priorities, what we might want you guys to think about budgeting for, like in capital expenditures. And we have nothing out of the ordinary, nothing that we don't go do every single year. We're not looking for anything. We were looking for a automated fingerprint system, that Inklis system that connects us with the state and the feds. But we got one of those donated to us, so we don't need that anymore. It was like $14,000.
Who didn't want one?
Well, we got the money donated to us from a trust fund with one of the local churches and it was in the paper. But, so we bought it with that money. Yeah.
Awesome. What I was wanting or what I requested was, at the first of the year, that all the departments and commissions had identified priorities. And it was just an opportunity for the department head or the commission chair to identify those priorities briefly and give us a status on where they were. So it's more like a management by objective type of system, so we would just hear. And then if we had any questions, obviously if you presented it in person, it would be a chance for us to clarify something if we didn't understand it. In order to thank you for your good job.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I mean, we really don't need anything out of the ordinary that we budget for every year.
Nobody else? Okay. Thank you, Earl.
Everybody have a good night.
Thank you, Earl.
Dwayne, you're up. Mr. Allen, our public works director.
Hello. So, I'm like, Earl, I need everything, so.
Earl, come back here. Dwayne says he needs everything.
That's why I'm leaving. So, but, yeah, it's, you know, update, we've got, obviously, a lot, you know, a lot of things we're trying this year and then we look back at the five years and a lot of it's marked, you know, in progress, so. That's our staple answer, but...
What would you, what would you say is not the biggest, but kind of the most pressing priority?
Well, you know, just looking back, like when I started, the main thing was trying to get us back on footing, the whole departments, give everything back to where we're, you know. We do have some reserves, we, you know, the equipment and stuff's in place, personnel and stuff like that, so. Yeah, it's a, you know, the whole thing's the big picture and I think, you know, we're making steps in the right way, but it's, you know, it's tough, so. You can't get everything and that's the one thing, we're talking, you know, of capital. We want to try to do anything with the purchasing streets, that's approving with the tax situation that's just now kicked in with the highway department. We'll be getting some more money back, $36,000 something a year extra for streets and then, you know, we can try to, try, they're giving other money, grant money away on this projects. But if we tie water and sewer into that, then that's, you know, and we have to put a percentage of everything we do, department-wise, is broken down, how much to use and this and that. And that, there's basically not gonna be any money, capital money in water and sewer, so.
Can I follow up with that?
You go ahead.
So, what do you think we need to do with water and sewer? I mean, it's funded by the rates, the rate structure that's in place now for both. I mean, do you foresee that those rates might have to increase to help address some of the issues that we have?
Yeah, we've been talking to Lonnie, but I mean, we, like I said, we got an increase several years ago in water and sewer and then the water's become a little bit of bump with the southern index. But, you know, we've been talking to Lonnie about what we want to ask for, but, you know, far as trying to, we realize you can't come in and ask for the sun and the moon and the city can't stand it, so. It's, it'll have to be a balance, but obviously you got to try to keep up with inflation and we haven't had a sewer increase since 2007. So, we've also already talked about our rates, you know, tap fees and all that, so we want to come to two with you that pretty soon, raising that, getting that in line. But we're not losing money on that, so. But, you know, it's just, a lot of cities our size, it's not only us, it's tough. If you're, you're not, you're only selling the amount of water we are, it makes it hard to keep things up, so.
On the list of priorities that you gave us at the first of the year, I don't remember if we identified it or if you had identified it and we just picked it up. There was a discussion about buying flow meters to check on the water leakage and start an assessment of the leakage throughout the system and then identify the areas that had the highest leakage and then start a plan on those. Where are you at on that?
Well, yeah, buying the flow meters, that may be a problem, but we're trying to find it, but we're, right now, we're getting our correlator. It's getting our units, there's three satellite units and then the unit itself that you can track where the leaks are, you know, it sends a pulse back. So, we've got this in Ohio, getting new batteries and calibrated, so, you know, it's not gonna be a whole lot of money, so we're still, still have some good equipment there. As far as, you know, adding to that, that's, you know, at some point, we want to try to model the system and put it in and, you know, that's, we'll get there at some point, but it's, you can't do it overnight.
So, how much impact is the water leakage creating right now as far as monetary?
Well, it's, you know, it's not, you know, some think that we're leaking to the extent of 70, 80 or comparing us to other places, we're not to that. We've got down to 29, but it is a, there's a loss there, but it's not all, you know, leakage, you can add some meters. Trying to work on swapping out our big meters and, you know, anything over 10 years old, even on a 5/8 can start slowing down. So, it's a combination of things.
Go ahead, I defer to you. Oh, I was just gonna say, Dwayne, didn't you tell me in your office that Halliday Island had a flow meter that they would loan us, is that?
No, no, we had some information, they were talking about hiring a company to come in when I spoke with them.
Okay.
And now their equipment, it looks like, is unfixable and they're talking about at some point, they may spend about $30,000 and get a correlator there, so.
Let me go back to that again, because I'm, I'm just, I'm getting this vaporous, I don't mean to be crude about it, but I'm getting this kind of vaporous answer that has no timeline or it... I'm not getting a sense that we're going anywhere with it at all, we're just gonna talk about it and punch it on down the line to somebody else, which seems to have been punched down, pushed down, pushed down. And it's kind of getting a little bit tiring when infrastructure is constantly just put off. So, in your estimate, is this issue going to start having some resolution this year?
Well, that's, you know, financially is, you know, all I can do is, you know, we get back to the same answer. We have a certain amount of money in our budget and we spend it every year. But yes, that was the thing, we put in our, in this year's goal was to concentrate on finding some leaks and fixing more than we had the last couple of years. So that, that's on track to cut our water loss. Other than that, now, we're open to discussion of how do you increase your revenue?
Will you have identified by the time we do budget, the amount of money you need to get the equipment that you need to identify the leaks?
Yes, yes, but, you know, kind of put it in perspective, we've had, just recently, we had some unexpected pump trouble, but you don't know what's coming this year. Plant, distribution side, then we got a, we got a surge at the plant, burnt some underground wiring up. So, basically, you know, with the year the way it's looking, water and sewer, with what we're looking, with this cost that's came in, you know, I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can make it.
This year?
Without buying anything, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, so if council identified in the capital budgets, amount of money specific to buy the equipment rather than just putting it in your general fund, which would then be used for other things potentially, should it come up, we would have a better opportunity of getting that equipment?
Well, you know, that's, yeah, that's what you said, if we could, if capital-wise, if it's something that's put in, it's for that, it's approved, it could be spent no other way, obviously.
Thank you.
I'm just curious and it's not, it's more of a immediate kind of thing, what is the status up there at the, up by pads on the sewer?
Sherwood?
Yeah, the Sherwood.
Well, we, like I said, it's fine at this point, but we think it, you know, we talked before the roots will eventually grow back in there, you know, unless we, and the plan is to try to, is to replace that and try to get that in this fall as things slow down, so we talked about, you know, with the owners there, you know, trying to get that done as, as we get caught up and then they slow down, so. But it'll have to be, you know, state-approved and we're working on that, so we have to put the plans together, get back and, you know.
That's, that's in the process right now.
Right. And hopefully, you know, that's, that's funny, we talked about it's there and we've kind of set, that's set back of this pool, so we're hoping, you know, we're gonna go ahead with that and what we have to do and then if we have to come back and say, look, we're, we're over here at the end of the year, that's, you know, we may get into that discussion. But there's large, one of the large pumps there that went out, the Peller and everything else, is just a shock, it was like a 20-year life unit. So, that's the bigger cost and we'll try to...
The sewer plant?
Yeah. And then we had some trouble with the distribution pumps on the distribution side, Carol Boone, back to us, those things 31 years. So, they've been fantastic, but, you know, it's, so we're looking, you know, we got trouble with one and we've got four total, how long do we have there? So, that's, that's the other question, so, but...
Well, that's why I brought up this issue about rates. That's about the only way you get funding, correct? And Public Works has always been behind and over and never had enough to even deal with any kind of unforeseeable or even hardly even to keep level with what we have to do every year, much less pumps that go down, unforeseen, pumps that go down. So, I mean, this is a discussion we're gonna have to look at honestly in the near future.
You get back to the history of several years before that we were all involved, but, you know, I mean, there was, there's, the cities, whatever happened here or there, absorbed quite a bit of debt. So that's, you know, if we had that debt off of us, then it wouldn't be as degree we're in, but there's no, there's no going back now, so.
True. And that's why it's great to have you come and update us on your priorities, because your priorities identified projects that were important enough that they needed to be listed out for us to know what they were, for council to be aware of them. And then council's supposed to do their part, which is obviously help you get funded to meet these needs. So that way, we won't be having these discussions, well, it's in the plan, it's in the works, it would be nice to see some action occasionally.
Right, yes.
And you can't have action unless you have the money to do it or the personnel, we totally all understand that. So, again, it's thank you for coming and standing there and answering questions and for all that you do.
You bet.
I can't, I mean, I don't have it in front of me and I'm sure it's available, is the projections on the debt service retirement. And, you know, how can things be floated along till that happens? You know, I mean, is it, is it one year, two years, five years, 10 years, 30 years, you know, that's, you know, so, I mean, you can see if they're right at the end of the tunnel in that respect.
You know, we, just lately, they've refinanced a couple of them, which helped a lot, so, you know, you guys have voted on that, but it's, overall, yeah, you're talking long-term. It's, you can see, you know, some of them dropping off, but, yeah, we're talking, you know, 20 years down the road.
There's always gonna be something, but I mean, if, if we're retiring something, you know, in the near future, then that frees up that much capital for something else. I mean, is there anything like that?
Not, not for several years, you know, as far as the debt, you know, nothing, nothing.
Refinanced last year.
So, yeah, that's, you know, and there's, there's really not all, any money, you know, grant money, we've kicked that all around and looked and what we're trying to do, but, you know, I mean, in other words, but we're not in this horrible situation, you know. The system's not as bad as one would believe and, like I said, you will get hit in this and that, but we do need to get, where we have some reserves, if things can happen with the tanks and maintenance. We need to, you know, to do some maintenance on those this year, at some point, they'll have to be repainted and it's just, like I said, trying to get it planned out, but right now, it's, it's, you know, that's, that's the problem. Until you get ahead, then you're still spending too much, you know.
It's one of those things that there's never gonna be enough money, there's never gonna be.
If you wanted to make it perfect, no, you know, it's, so, basically, it's just to try to, but we can improve it and keep, you know, moving in the right direction.
That's what we've got to do with what we have, that's great.
And make sure we don't, you know, make the wrong decisions with what we've got or we're, you know, there's no way out, I understand, so.
Any further questions for him? Not, we'll kick him loose, he can go home.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thanks, Dwayne, thanks.
All right, that puts us into commission committee authority reports and expired terms. First up is planning, Beverly?
On the 12th of June, I send you all an email from the planning commission, asking you to add to a future agenda, a discussion about the 200-foot rule being added to all residential zones. I brought a few of those copies, if you don't have it, I would like for y'all to please add that to the next agenda at the end of your meeting. Tomorrow, planning has a very large agenda, I just wanted to let you know some things that I have on that agenda. Tomorrow, we have a public hearing for a conditional use permit at 30 King Street for a B&amp;B. We also have a public hearing for adding small entertainment to C3, that's on your agenda tonight, but we do have a public hearing on that tomorrow. I have a public hearing on July 9th for a zoning variance for the waiver of the 200-foot rule at 8 Washington Street. Some exciting things, we have new construction review tomorrow for the Queen Anne Mansion. They want to add a swimming pool and a putt-putt golf course and possibly take down some outbuildings. I also have a new construction review for 10 Mountain Street, which is Chelsea's, and they want to take down that carport that's there and put up a new one and add a deck to it and maybe another one. And then we have the vacation of Rock Street on our agenda tomorrow, it's already been through parks. And we are also working on some procedures for vacating property. We don't exactly have a distinct list in our codebook and we are working on that.
Beverly, Rock Street is parallels North Main?
If you turn North Main at Magnetic, it's that first street that goes straight up, there was a home up there.
Okay, there's not a street there, there was years and years, years ago. So, what are we vacating it for?
The owners asked for the vacation, they paid for the application fee and they are asking for that because it's, that actual street sits within six foot of their front door.
Oh, just that portion of Rock Street, not all of Rock Street, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep. Beverly, the zoning map, you haven't heard anything, where that's at?
No, I'll have to ask Glenna and she's on vacation this week.
Okay, and then at one of the council meetings not too long ago, the discussion was about changing the whole South Main from 62 all the way down to commercial zone. It's playing, and I haven't saw that on your agenda yet, is that coming up soon?
We tried to get it at the end of June, but Glenna didn't have enough time to get all the people that had to be notified, so it will be on the meeting. We will have a public hearing for that in July.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, David.
I've moved some to CAPC, I don't think we have anybody here from CAPC. No hospital report, nothing from parks. HDC, Glenna's gone, she would have given the report tonight with the Earl and Dwayne. And cemetery, I think they just had a recent resignation, so they have possession of the two of them. Moves us to public comments. Mr. Bob Dzinski.
I've got a few comments with regard to 2184. Planning was not given any guidance as to precisely what constitutes operating as a legal weekly rental entitled to be grandfathered in. I assume that this does not include those renting to transients, but only those renting to non-transient tenants under a valid landlord-tenant agreement. That needs to be clarified, I believe, to planning, so they know what it, precisely what it is that they're supposed to do. After all, calling something legal that is blatantly illegal will not pass judicial scrutiny. Now, the ordinance does not address whether it is appropriate to grandfather in those violating other provisions in the code. For example, the Hockaday Cottage located behind 265 Spring Street. I spent the morning with Bobby Ray looking for a building permit and CO, we couldn't find either. What I did find was evidence that the cottage and adjoining parking for that cottage sits on city-owned property. If time permits, I'll try to go into that in detail. Now, as for the so-called weekly renters, they assume incorrectly that they could rent to tourists on a weekly basis due to an alleged conflicting provision in the zoning code. So far, they have not claimed that the remainder of the code doesn't apply to them. For example, the building codes 200-foot restriction, the minimum parking requirements and COs for the building that they intend to put their tenants or transients or whatever they want to call them in. That being the case, shouldn't planning require proof that the so-called weekly rentals are not in violation of Eureka's building and zoning ordinances? Those who want to be included in the list of the chosen few should be required to produce COs for the dwelling units, proof of adequate off-street parking and the code requires two for the residents and one for each unit that is being rented, as well as proof that they are not in violation of the 200-foot restriction, as well as any other provisions of the code. If it were me, I would require a survey. After all, you know, when you buy a house, you know, the prudent thing to do is to get a survey and your banks all require a survey when you get a mortgage loan. So asking them to produce a survey won't really, you know, place any burden on these people who want to be included in that list that's attached to the ordinance. And while the ordinance states that grandfathered properties are required to continually operate in accordance with all applicable code provisions, there is no provision in ordinance 2184 for revocation, no matter what crime they commit. Now, if you get a CUP, as the Angel at Rose Hall has, if you violate the law, you can have that CUP revoked. I don't understand why these people are put on a platform that no matter what they do, there's, you know, there's absolutely nothing that they can do that will lead to the revocation. Now, they could be cited for other provisions in the ordinances, but that would only lead to the next issue that I want to bring up, penalties. At the beginning of this discussion, somebody brought up, well, these people should be penalized more than other people who violate these zoning ordinances. Well, in effect, this ordinance actually lessens the penalty, it doesn't increase it. It's existing law, which is 140809D, provides that a violation is a misdemeanor and violators shall be fined, not less.
Your time's up, sir.
Excuse me?
You have three minutes, sir.
Well, that's why I put it in writing, thank you very much.
There's nobody else on public comments, that moves us on to unfinished business. Number one, discussion on schedule town hall meeting workshop in July.
Before, before we go on to the agenda, I would like to make a statement.
Point of order.
Okay.
That's point of order.
Yes.
That's for council comments?
No. Is it, I don't know what it's called, I'm asking him.
It's contrary to our procedure.
Is it something regarding the agenda?
It deals with what's on the agenda, which, and what's been said during public comments and all of that stuff is wrapped up into one.
We have to address it during comments, sir.
It isn't for public comments or council comments.
Well, it'll have to wait till it comes to an agenda item, then.
All right. I don't know what it's called, but I know there's something where we can speak before the meeting goes on.
Okay. Motion to discuss, number one. Second?
Second.
Floor's open.
I, I don't know that we need a workshop for this, I, I just ask anybody interested in setting up an agenda for the Town Hall Meeting, that we could get together at the restaurant, I would hope Mr. Perkypile and Mr. Mitchell would join in since, and anybody else is welcome to attend, we're not gonna be discussing public business, but, uh, I, I really don't feel the need to set up a workshop for it, so if we can set up a time that anybody is interested in just discussing the procedure for the Town Hall Meeting, I'll, I'll set a time and we can just get together informally.
I, I agree, I agree to you doing that, sounds fine with me. Absolutely.
So we have three right now, and if anybody else, just get in contact with me, we're just basically wanting to set up the format for the Town Hall Meeting.
Thanks, sir.
I'm glad to have you guys.
Yes, sir.
Can I address James?
Yes.
James, would you, uh, find a, a time that's suitable for you and maybe email David and I back and forth?
Yeah, right off the bat, Wednesday's a good day for me, 'cause the restaurants closed.
This Wednesday?
Uh, you know, if you guys can work it in.
Wednesdays are good, though?
Yeah.
Yeah. That sounds great. Not this Wednesday.
Not this Wednesday, okay.
Okay.
We'll shoot for the poll on Wednesday then.
Okay, just let us know, thank you.
I have girlfriends here.
Not that, we skipped number two, it's been postponed, move to number three, it'd be the second reading of Ordinance 2184.
Set move.
Set move. Second.
Second. Floor's open. Ms. Snyder.
Mr. City Attorney, why was, on, Ordinance 2184, why was the, the days of 30 days changed to 31, I don't think we ever got an explanation on that, or at least not something that I heard.
It refers to our requirement for paying tax under the CAPC.
Okay, so we have monthly rentals, and I always get the terms mixed up and my dyslexia is raging today, we have our monthly rentals, and as long as they have rented it for the full month, then this tax gets paid to CAPC?
There's a tax if they're renting it for less than the 31 days.
There's a tax if they're renting it for less than 31? Oh, okay, oh, okay, I see, dyslexia, I had it reversed, okay, well, aside from everything else that I've brought up, my problem with this 31-day thing, and I'm gonna read the part that I'm having a problem with, the last line in Section 1, "Each day of any rental of 31 days or less shall be considered a separate offense," now, true, we're basically talking about weeklies, but, the way this reads, any of our monthly rentals during the months of February, April, June, September, and November, technically, and legally, means the police department will show up at those rentals and charge them $500 a day for the 30 days, because those five, four months have 30 days, one has 28, and the way this is worded, any rental, 30 days or less.
No.
Okay, how?
Because you're not renting month-to-month anymore, you're renting 31 days or more.
Okay, we have monthly rentals.
No, you will not, once you have passed this, except those are on the list.
Wait a minute, but this is supposed to be.
You will have to create a lease.
This says weekly rentals, it doesn't say weekly and/or monthly.
The title is irrelevant, the title of an ordinance is irrelevant, it is there simply to identify the ordinance, it is like the ordinance number, it is not part of the ordinance itself.
So, we could call this.
The document is controlled by the paragraphs.
We could call this circus rentals, and as long as this is what's in, that's all that matters.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, why, this is just getting worse, why are we not specifying clearly this is covering weekly and/or monthly, not a single person in this town probably knows this will end monthly rentals, or maybe a handful?
I would expect that if they've been listening to this discussion or reading the newspaper, they would.
I didn't get it until I think it was yesterday, all of a sudden I went, wait a minute, and reread that line several times, I did not get it, so what we're saying is, we're not gonna just do away with weekly, we're gonna do away with weekly and monthly, right?
We're doing away with anything that's 31 days or le, or less than 31 days.
Which leaves us with six months.
No.
Okay.
A lot of three-month leases.
Okay, so what this is boiling down to is, we're getting rid of anything where you aren't staying at a hotel or a B and B, being plain and simple, is that what's happening?
I don't understand your question.
If we aren't gonna have weekly rentals, we don't have monthly, and I could've sworn we had all kinds of little cottages and stuff that were like for a month, we had weekly, monthly, six months, and actually, the, the year-long or the annual's like an apartment-type situation, it was, you know, long-term, so what you're seeing is, we're not gonna have anything, the only thing we're gonna have left is hotel, motel, or B and B, am I misunderstanding a line?
Or tourist lodging in the other residential sections other than R1.
And tourist lodging is for how long?
I don't believe our code defines a set number of days.
But weeklies cannot go to tourists, what about 30, 31-day rentals, is that, is that stipulated, um, tourist or transient?
That is to eliminate tourists.
So, all we're gonna have left is hotel, motel, B and B, and in two residential areas of the three, there will be tourist lodging, God only knows for how long?
Yes.
And y'all don't have a problem with that?
Mr. McClung.
You don't see that this needs work?
Thank you, Mayor, um, you know, I'm no lawyer, but, or even close, and, you know, Mr. Weaver is, and, and he's right, but I think, I, I think that, you know, should someone ever take this to court on this issue, I mean, they're gonna look at the spirit of the law, and a month is a month, and, and, you know, some months have 28 days, some have 31, but they will go based on whatever that month is, they're not gonna be that technical, just because it says 31 days, it's gonna be, the spirit of the law is a month, so if you try to take someone to court over that, because they, the month of February, they rented 28 days, and somebody, you know, tried to do that, and the court's not gonna buy it.
But he just said we don't have monthly.
Well, you know what, everyone has an opinion.
Mr. DeVito.
This only addresses residential zones, there's plenty of property in commercial zones to rent by the week, by the day, by the month, by the year, so, uh, there, there's plenty of adequate facilities in commercial zones for people that, uh, wanna rent, we're, we're addressing the encroachment on residential zones.
Ms. Snyder.
Commercial property or commercial areas is not historic Victorian, people who come here for a lengthy time, be it a week, a month, or six months, want to appreciate the Victorian, they don't wanna stay on the hill, they don't wanna stay in a hotel, most of the time they can't afford a B and B, they do not want commercial.
Ms. Elder.
The R2 and R3 residential zones, okay, I'm still trying to get my head around this, do we not have, um, cottages and cabins and things in R2 and R3 that can operate with a CUP, do we not have that? Yes, we do have that, so this is not correct, what Ricky says is gonna take out everything, it's, all this is going to do is eliminate R1, would it be more comfortable if we called this an ordinance prohibiting rentals of less than 31 days in property located within an R1 residential zone?
With no CUP.
What, isn't that what you're trying to say this does?
That's what I believe it does.
Yeah, okay, so if we, if we titled it that, would you be more comfortable with that, because it still leaves cabins and cottages and, and other, you know, gingerbread houses and everything in the R2 and R3 zones.
Mr. DeVito.
I, I think the title addresses what we're trying to accomplish here, there are a number of properties, Victorian properties in C1, you can stay at 66 Center Street, that's a commercial zone, it's the old Perkins House, there are other properties in this town that are Victorian, that are in C1 zones, that you can rent by the day, by the week, by the month, for as long as you want, so, there are properties out there.
Mr. McClung, you had your hand up next.
There are plenty of houses in C1 that are rented monthly, many of them probably do not even have a lease, they're on a month-to-month basis, uh, you know, this should not affect that, right?
If you change it to 30 days, it won't, and you could, and you could do it with 30 days, because the, the tax is actually required on 29 days or less, I believe, which technically means that, Ms. Snyder, that all the renters in town who are renting in February should be paying the tax, and, as Mr. McClung said, there's not a strict enforcement of that, because any court around would read a 28 or 29-day month, depending on leap year, as being a month.
See, now you're getting it, okay, so I have a question that I have to ask, and I would actually like an, a serious, straightforward, honest answer from everyone in regards to.
Point of order.
Why are we.
State, Ms. Snyder.
Point of order, we don't have the ability to poll council, that's why we vote.
I'm not polling, I'm asking you a question.
Okay, well, you can.
I'm asking the council a question.
Okay, you can address that, that question to one specific person, Mayor.
Okay, I'm addressing you for them to answer, either of you, why are we trying to end, get rid of, whatever you wanna call it, weekly rentals, instead of giving it its own designation, criteria, and CUP, I pointed out at the last meeting how important weeklies are, for a variety of reasons, why do we want to end them, rather than clarify and remove any wordage whatsoever designating tourist, transient, et cetera?
Mr. Weaver.
Basically, I think that goes back to a decision that was made 19 years ago, 18 years ago, something along that line, by previous councils that decided to no longer allow transient, uh, expansion of the transient population for tourists within the R1 district, and started putting in restrictions, and then there was added to that the cup language for R2 and R3, to do away with what you're trying to advocate, maybe we should just open up completely, and maybe this council feels, maybe this council feels that what was done 18 or 20 years ago was improper, or is no longer necessary, and, and maybe you want to do that, but I've heard at least some opinions at this table that says, we don't want to lose our residential property to everyone opening up to renting to tourists, that we wanna preserve our neighborhoods, and that's the same language that was used, if you go back and look at the council meetings, that it started imposing these restrictions, how many ever years ago it was, I think, I think it was 19 years ago, but I'd have to go back and look.
I'd like to have a question. Do you need a second on that?
Yes, we need a second on.
Second.
Actually, there isn't too much.
I don't think we have an active motion on that.
We have no motion on the floor.
So, we don't have anything to take action on, other than, Ms. Snyder, you had your hand up there.
Um, one of the things that concerns me so much, and maybe it's because between my husband and I, we raised six kids, when families go on vacation, and for those of you who may have had one or none, as the case may be, when families go on vacation, they cannot afford to eat out three times a day, okay, they need to have a kitchen available, those situations are really limited, if you wanna spend more than two days on your vacation, trust me, it gets expensive, they look for places where they can stay for a long weekend, for a full week if it's in the summertime, which is traditionally when vacations are taken, they look for a place with a kitchen, yes, they do go out to dinner periodically, but most of their money is spent in the daytime doing activities, they buy food at the local grocery store, they go back to wherever it is they're renting, and they cook dinner for the kids, this is who's being knocked out, do you know how many millions of people go on vacation with children, and we're saying, too bad, we don't want you, that's one of the big things, then you've got the situations like, like I explained last time, my son, my girlfriend, my girlfriend just got in, she was gonna stay a week, she can't do a weekly 'cause of what's going on, doesn't wanna get me involved in that, these are the things we have to look at, as far as protecting our neighborhood, as far as protecting our neighborhoods, I don't think a little one-bedroom or whatever little teeny house on your property is disrupting any kind of neighborhood, if you have guidelines, if you have CUPS, everybody's got a voice, if they say it'll disrupt, they can vote it down, no problem, if it's not gonna disrupt, let them do it, I have such a problem with telling people you can't come here because we don't have the lodging you want or can afford, I don't think it's right that we at this table, whether it's now or 20 years ago, should be telling the whole city, we don't care what you want, we're not gonna let you do it, even if your neighbors say it's fine, if you think it's fine, we don't, as far as our brand-new $10 million school, people aren't gonna move here for that school in city limits in regards to tourist lodging anymore or less than they're going to in the surrounding area, you can't use the new school as a pool to say, well, if we have lodging, we don't have new people in our new school, it doesn't work that way, I'm just concerned that we're really shutting out a big part of people coming here.
Mr. DeVito.
I move to suspend the rules and place Ordinance Number 2184 on its second reading by title only. I'll second that.
Could be a real call vote.
Yes.
When do we have discussion on that, prior to a vote or after?
We already did, didn't we?
Yeah, we've been having a discussion.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
No.
Ms. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
No.
For two?
Um, before we take a, a vote on it, to approve it for its second reading, um, I just, I just wanna be sure that before it comes to the third one, that we have a clear understanding of what this list is and what it covers, because I'm not real comfortable with this, I mean, it's, it's something that we're addressing, but I wanna be sure of where we are with it when we're done with it, before it becomes an ordinance and codified, I want the i's dotted and the t's crossed, so there's no confusion.
Mr. Perkypile.
It appears to me that, um, the conditional uses here in our zoning for R1 also include a bed and breakfast, my understanding is at least one property owner in this list of weekly rentals will try to, is applying for a conditional use permit for that property, that appears to be a kind of a logical solution to this whole issue. That appears to be a kind of a logical solution to this whole issue, is if it's in R1, if you want to use it for that sort of lodging, B and B lodging, that comes with its own rules, its own regulation, and it's already set up. It has to be approved through planning, but it seems to be something that could be set up for people that have these businesses that they want to operate with. You know, that's, that appears to be, to me, the way these folks ought to go.
Mr. Mitchell, you were next.
procedurally, Mayor, I mean, you really should read it by title, and then they can have their discussion and get to the vote.
Okay. Ordinance 2184, an ordinance prohibiting weekly rentals of property located within any residential zone.
Mr. Mitchell.
You know, this topic started in June of '12, had tremendous amount of discussion and...
Ms. Snyder, I'll get to you in a second.
Came up through to where our sitting city attorney, who's never been disbarred or had any other issues, has discussed with us his opinion on how to proceed based on the fact that the city has fingerprints all over this in the past, too, with actions or lack of actions, and the letter here that Glenn had evidently sent out at one time, and it looks very much like the city condoned and almost in some ways promoted weekly rentals. I'm going to go with our legally qualified city attorney in an attempt to resolve this issue, knowing perfectly well that it's not expanding past this point, and more than likely, based on the turnout at planning, there was only three people, one of which is applying for a B and B at this point, that made the weekly list so far. So technically, we could only be maybe talking about three to four pieces of property that will be left actively as legally non-conforming weekly rentals under the jurisdiction of that owner, which they cannot transfer and will more than likely die out. And then, in fact, we have controlled the issue of weekly henceforth, and we're not going to be sitting here and discussing transient dwellings and all the other things and legally wading through it because our attorney has fixed us an ordinance here which would eliminate it. Again, we have a lot of, don't forget, we have a lot of second homeowners in this town who, if they really figured out that this was potentially out there, would have been potentially jumping on this more because it gives them much better opportunities for tax issues when they're in the weekly business versus just a second home sitting there. So I really would like to, my personal opinion is, I think our attorney's done a good job with this, and I hopefully will continue to pass it.
Ms. Snyder.
The only problem with trying to change it into a B and B is that's bed and breakfast. So you go from turning a set of living quarters to a family to do with as they want, to making it a bed and breakfast where if they want breakfast, they'd better by God be to that table at a certain time. There's a world of difference between B and B and just having the use of a home for a week. Big difference. And I don't think we should be doing away with weeklies, period. I still say, give them a designation, an explanation, a C U P, let them be their own thing. We still would not have an overabundance of them. So whether there's three left or not, I still think it's wrong. I think we're missing a huge tax base of people coming to Eureka.
Mr. McClung.
I want to make a statement that doesn't, I mean, it's in regard to this. I don't believe that, you know, if, if anyone that's in the employ of the city, that represents the city, if they made a statement that, you know, this was a credible plan of action a person could take to rent a piece of property, that there is just an opinion of theirs. There's nothing in law that says that they could do that. You know, I don't think it's right, just because they did it, that we necessarily have to condone or agree with it. It's, you know, if somebody overstepped their bounds, then that's wrong. But, you know, just because they did that, we still don't change the law. You know, I am very supportive of those that went through all the hoops to get those C U Ps in the past. You know, very difficult, very time-consuming, very mentally, emotionally stressful. Some didn't get approved. You know, I just believe that in fairness to those, that, you know, that the, that the law be observed as it was written in the intent that it was done. So, you know, that's why anything we do with this ordinance in approving it, you know, we need to have the i's dotted and the t's crossed before it, you know, dries. It's ridiculous. So we don't have this kind of thing again, you know. It's, city administration should not be making judgments on their own. Should not happen.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell.
I think at some point, our city attorney has told us in the past that if, at some point, if the city or the body that gives the citations were to issue a citation, then the court would be the ultimate decider of whether what was in the past being done with weeklies was legitimate or not legitimate. So to me, up to this point, I, I'm not, I have never cast judgment on those people that were doing the weeklies as if it was illegal or not, because it's never been 100%, it's never been tested and are proven that they were wrong. And I think what our attorney has done with this is help us work our way out of that situation, and that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? I see we were, we had a vote.
Just to read the title, then, we just need to vote to approve.
Need a motion to...
We have to vote.
I will need a motion to do so. Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2184 on its second reading.
Second.
Made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Never.
No.
For two?
Correct.
Okay. Motion carries. That'll take care of it. Ms. Snyder.
Can we at least ask the attorney to clean up the title, to make it a little bit more all-encompassing and clear to the populace in general who has no legal background?
We've moved on to the next topic, item four.
Show us one.
Did we vote on this?
Yes, we did.
For two.
Okay.
Motion discussed number four.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2183 on its third reading by title only.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Be a real call vote.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Uh, yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes. Just ring it off on the floor.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Five-one. Ordinance number 2183, an ordinance three-zone property from R1 Victorian residential to C1 Victorian commercial.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number, where did I lose it? 2183 on its third reading.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hang on, hang on, here. My bad. Third reading, we've got to do the real call.
And that's where you use the covered cup.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Eller?
Um...